Counselor Martin? Counselor Mercer?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Three present, one absent.
Thank you. This has been an ongoing process. Today, we want to kind of, there's a few items yet that we haven't really come up with a firm solution for. Those are the items that I have under number one here. So we'll be discussing them, getting an update, and hopefully have a working recommendation. And wrap this up as soon as we can. And then, the items in number two, we've already been given us some solutions for, but, so we won't be discussing them in detail unless there's an update that needs to be made. Oops, I had the mic off, sorry. So once again, we'll go over the items in number one, to try and come up with solutions that we can use going forward. And then on number two, if there are any updates, but those are things we've already heard solutions for. Some of them are ongoing, but we'll continue. So the intent tonight is to finish up with the unresolved items, and maybe have one more meeting this year just for updates. And then there should be a new council and a new subcommittee, we'll see where that goes. Does anyone on the subcommittee have anything to add at this point?
You're doing fine there, Joe. Keep it going. Oh, here's Bill.
Just wait a second. All right, so the first item I had, we've discussed before, but just to get a firm answer on, was association memberships. And I wasn't sure what the fees are, or if our line item for memberships has already covers it. We did receive a communication from our acting city clerk. And do we have a copy for Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I just gave him a copy.
All right.
I think I took yours.
All right, is there another copy?
I left a copy on.
Oh, I have one here.
Oh, good.
Yeah, okay. So we'll start with that item, and since we have the communication from the clerk, if you would just explain what those costs are, and what we have currently to cover them?
Yes, currently, the line item in the budget is $300 to cover dues and subscriptions. That has historically been used to cover the clerk's membership with the Massachusetts City Clerks Association, and the clerk's municipal bond, which is an annual fee that the clerk also takes on. The membership to the Massachusetts Clerks Association is $150. The municipal bond, at last check, I think it's $100. There's also a, I guess the kind of the question in a larger sense is, I've been informed that historically, the, there was a time when the assistant clerk's membership in the Massachusetts Clerks Association was also paid for, I believe that's $75. There's also a New England City and Town Clerks Association, which the total fees for the clerk and the assistant clerk to join would be $40 annually. And above and beyond that, there would be, if there were conferences that involved a charge, that there's, that would be generally, I think, where the line item that those would come from, those associations hold conferences multiple times during the year. And I think that both in Attorney Leahy's original report, and in my experience in the office, it, I think it would be a helpful thing for the clerk's office going forward to have both the clerk and the assistant clerk as members in those associations, to be able to access their resources, and also to have the ability to attend, at least in the Massachusetts City Clerks Association, the annual conferences that they have, because that's where I think the clerk's office can get both exposure to how other clerks are handling the challenges of the clerk's office, and some guidance from maybe some more experienced clerks as to how to deal with some of the, some of the issues that are going to be ongoing, just because they, I think they had, this is what happens when you have a clerk in a municipality that is as old as Lowell is.
Counselor Mercer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a line item for out-of-state travel in that, on your budget?
There is no line item for out-of-state travel, no.
So that would require more money for that, once a year?
Yeah, well, is the, there-
Massachusetts City Clerks Association always meets in Massachusetts. So it wouldn't be out-of-state travel.
Oh, it wouldn't be out-of-state travel, okay.
It would just be, I mean, I don't think there would be, I don't think there would be a need to go out-of-state for a regional clerk's association.
You're asking for $40 more. You have a transfer within your budget for that, from one account to another?
Well, like I said, I'm not sure that it would end up to be $40. It's certainly not going to be a significant amount. It's probably, just to cover the dues, it probably comes out to be, you know, around $100, but other, you know, so that's not-
So you could come in with an appropriation transfer?
Absolutely. I'm just, I was just dealing with the issue just of the subcommittee, and by extent, the council would have that.
So, I mean, we're, this fiscal year is pretty well set, and we're going to be through it pretty quickly. But, so, we, the bulk of the cost is already covered. We already have it in the budget, $300 a year, that should cover dues for both clerk and the assistant clerk.
It should, well, it will, assuming that they, we have memberships to the New England City and Clerks Association, it will, I mean, it will come close to covering it with the bond.
And so, really, the only thing is if they were, if we need at least one of them to attend a convention to keep up on latest trends, or what's going on for the clerk's office, that might be an additional cost, but it doesn't seem like it's much of an incremental cost of what's already budgeted.
Oh, no, it's certainly not something that's, would be, would be any order of magnitude over what we have. It's a matter of a couple hundred dollars at the most, I would think.
Okay. And so now, to the manager, from the budget perspective, is there something that we could budget? Is it going to be a problem?
It's actually, the way that the city council votes the budget, you vote a, an expense line, in the case of fiscal year 2012, the expense line for the clerk's office is $20,600. Anything that is an expense within that, you don't actually vote $1,500 for repair and maintenance of equipment, and $8,000 for professional services. You vote just the $20,600 number. The other gives you a breakdown to give you a sense of where the money's going, and that we track it according to those. But anything, you know, we're talking $100 here, $200, I'm sure, I'm confident, that it can be found somewhere in the $20,600 number that's there.
Yeah, so it's not going to be a budget problem.
It's not a budget problem.
So just kind of a bookkeeping thing, that in future budgets, there'd be enough in that line item to cover these- Even if it comes from somewhere else in the same office.
Exactly. You could increase that by $200, up to $500, and then drop something else down, and you still have the $20,600. And I certainly think, in our, we could put another couple hundred dollars in that line, in the $20,600 line next year for professional development. And I couldn't agree more that there should be professional development in clerk's office. And long range, I would recommend that you look at having the city clerk join the International Association of Clerks. But certainly, at a minimum, they should be attending the Massachusetts Clerks meetings.
Okay, so we're, we can go ahead as the oversight subcommittee, and recommend that the item for the association does be properly funded in future budgets.
Absolutely.
Right, so move on that motion.
Motion by Counselor Mercer. Second, by Counselor Murphy. And just the recommendation to the full council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So we'll have that as a recommendation to the full council. Anything else on association memberships? Moving on. The next item I had was office staffing. And at the last meeting, we received a spreadsheet from our CFO, Tom Moses, that gave us a comparison of what other communities have for staffing, what we have. There's never exactly apples-to-apples comparisons, every community's a little different in how they're structured, some do elections, some don't. So it was good that he had the support for the clerk, the city council, in the form of the mayor's office and staffing there, along with elections. So by having all three, we have a better comparison with other communities that split them up differently, or put them together differently. And we seem to be in the middle of the pack. Of the nine communities, we were ranked sixth. Well, actually, there's 10. So we were sixth, with one being the one that spends the most per capita on their clerk's office. So we're right in the middle. And looking at other communities, my analysis is that we're not far from where we should be. And although there was a recommendation to consider more staffing, I don't see justification in the spreadsheet. And if there is a justification for more staffing, it would be temporary, to take care of some of the issues like scanning and materials, and things of that nature. And that's just my analysis of the spreadsheet for the staffing. I could ask the, our acting clerk, if you want to comment on it, or if you feel differently?
Well, I would, I would hesitate to guess, there's probably very few department heads who would volunteer to have less staffing. I think that the staffing in the clerk's office is adequate for the day-to-day duties of the clerk. The challenge is that there is a vast quantity of data entry, and scanning, and kind of document retention work that needs to be done. It is possible, and we are moving forward right now, assuming that there's not going to be an increase in paid staff, and that we'll have to meet that challenge either through utilizing interns or work-study. The MIS department has volunteered work-study students to attempt to kind of meet the gap between fitting our day-to-day work, and kind of catching up on the things that either should have been caught up on before, or simply are ongoing, the ongoing record retention of the older records that will likely be going on for quite a while. In my, in my report, I noted that we've, and it's kind of similar to, it's on this, it's on this topic, kind of, which is, we've approached MIS, they're going to be, we're going to be obtaining a new PC and scanner setup, which the goal is to have operated by either an intern or a work-study, one or more work-study students, who can do the record scanning and input on a, kind of a full-time basis, while they're in the office, without having to cover the front desk. The challenge is now that all the staff members that we have, between breaks and lunches, and doing the duties that cover the customer service part of the job, don't have large, kind of unbroken chunks of time to spend on the record retention, scanning portion of it, data entry portion of it. So the goal is to get another setup, so that in addition to whatever the current staff can do, we can have another individual, hopefully, with only the cost of the equipment, doing the, some record scanning of historic records, and trying to help us catch up. I've spoken to this, the chief information officer about it, and he has the work-study students that may be able to cover that. And I know that Brian Leahy had already reached out to try and obtain interns in the clerk's office. So that's, if a work-study student isn't going to work out, then that would be the road that I think the clerk's office should take. So we're proceeding as though staffing, and I think it's probably accurate, is not really a-
So it sounds like, what I'm hearing is, the day-to-day operations. Scanning in the new documents as they came in, come in, is something that can be handled with the current staffing. But catching up on all of the older documents that we want to scan in is where the problem would be, that there might not be enough time in the current staff, that they may not have enough time to do the catch-up work without doing something else. Like, another item we're going to be talking about is the office hours. But basically, we can do the work, the current work, and get it scanned in with the current staffing, is what I'm hearing.
That is, that is my belief. And I don't want to minimize the amount of catch-up work, or backlog of work that there is. We're talking about just the records that are stored in the clerk's office from 1950 to 1989. There's data entry and scanning for those records, and each, just births alone, you're talking about generally over 3,500 per year, over the course of 40 years. It's not a small amount of work. But I do think that if we can dedicate work-study time, or intern time, to doing that, which is, I think, appropriate work for a work-study or an intern to be doing, then I think that the office can handle the remainder of the work, and scanning the ongoing current records, without an increase in staffing, assuming, you know, everybody's there, and we're, and we have, you know, assistant, a clerk, an assistant clerk, and four, four head clerks. I think that would be sufficient.
So right now, we could get into a situation where we don't fall any further behind. All new documents, scanned in, we move forward. And obviously, over time, every year that goes by, we'll have more that's in the computer. Then the challenge is going to be to get the older documents scanned in, make them available in computer format as well, which could be done, as you said, by interns, part-time, as we can afford it.
Correct.
Does the manager have anything to add?
Well, I guess my feedback on that would be, unfortunately, every department has gone through similar cutbacks, and, but fortunately, there's technology now that really allows us to be much more effective and efficient with the deployment of staff, and getting various work products done. In the case of the clerk's office, it's very apparent that there's been a backlog of work that has gone by the wayside, that needs to be addressed. And I think the idea of using temporary employees, be they work-study, interns, or just temporary employees, that's the way to go, rather than move to add additional staff into that office. And then, you know, sort of living within the staffing pattern that we already have in place for that office, makes the most sense.
I know, I handed out some of our information that's in your budget, historical information about how the office was staffed. And so back in fiscal 2007, there were eight, and 2008 was cut to seven. And then when we had the crisis in 2009, creating the 2010 budget, there was another position eliminated, bringing it down to six.
Right.
In the mayor's office, there's only one. Staff used to be two, so there have been some cutbacks. So I understand that the operation is lean, and, but I'm hopeful we can keep up with the workload going forward, and we still need to take care of this backlog.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the, certainly, with the acting clerk, with the permanent clerk that is chosen, you know, I think it's imperative that if any issues like these arise, if they're brought to the attention of the manager, remedies can be put in place sooner, rather than let this type of backlog develop in the future. I would hope that that would be the case.
Any of the members have any comments, questions? Okay, so, does anyone feel they need to recommend anything other than maintaining the current staffing? So-
Is there any, I guess the question would be, is there any, is there adequate funding for the, in the current personnel, for some temporary employees? There's 293,000, and I haven't looked at that, to see if that's exactly what's needed to fund the current staffing that's there. It probably is.
Yeah, I think that the salaries and wages is to fund the existing staff.
Again, if there's communication between the clerk's office and my office, we could work to either bring a transfer in, or a transfer out of another department, or something of that sort, if additional money is needed for temporary help.
Yeah, I guess that would be the next step, is, so on a permanent basis, the current staffing would continue. But we do have a need for either intern work, or temporary help to work on that workload. So that's something that the clerk's office and the manager's office can work out, as far as maybe professional services, to make sure we have an appropriate funding. And there would be, temporary would not be burdensome in the sense of a permanent hire with the overhead that's involved. So, the recommendation of the subcommittee to the council as a whole would be to maintain the current staffing in the city clerk's office, far as permanent help is concerned, and to look for ways to add temporary assistance in the form of internships or part-time temporary positions, to work through the backlog of documents.
I'll make that, ditto, I should say.
Motion by Counselor Mercer, that we maintain current staffing, and that the clerk and the manager work on the ways and means of having temporary or interns to work on the backlog of documents that need to be scanned. Second, by Counselor Murphy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And motion carries. And-
And if I might add, we do have seniors that work off their taxes to some degree, and they volunteer for that. There could be another area.
Next item that I had was the actual office hours. And this could be a way to use the current staff, as was in the report, in order to free up their time within the office, so they could work on some of these other tasks. So I'll go to the clerk at this point, to what your recommendation would be at this time?
Thank you. It would be my recommendation that at least, on a temporary basis, and potentially on a, kind of a long-term basis, that the city council authorize the clerk's office to adjust their hours, at least partially during the week, to allow some time for the permanent staff members to devote to attempting to try and catch up on this backlog. Right now, the office is open eight to five, Monday through Friday. The current staffing involves one of the, one of the two supervisors, and one of the head clerks, coming in at eight, leaving at four. And the remainder of the staff coming in at nine, and leaving at five o'clock. What this effectually means is that between, we have full staffing between nine and four, and during that time, there are six people who have one-hour lunch breaks, and the head clerks have 15-minute paid breaks, in the morning and in the afternoon. So there's, each of them have a half an hour worth of breaks. It's, it creates a challenging situation, not only for catching up with the backlog, but also sometimes for coverage of the office. And that's when we're at full staff, when there's a, if somebody's out sick, or has a vacation day, or if, for any reason, is not available in the office, you're, the staffing gets that much more challenging, and there's less time during the day to devote staff time to anything other than covering the counters. What I would suggest would be something along the lines of Tuesday through Thursday, from nine to four, that be open to the public. The staff members would come in, and it wouldn't change the staff time. However, those extra six hours would be dedicated to catching up specifically on the backlog of data, data entry. I think it would be helpful, I think that based on kind of a Tuesday-through-Thursday schedule like that, staying open long hours on Monday and Friday, when I think there might be some more concern about people coming in early in the morning, or late in the day. You know, I'm obviously open to any, any extra time that the council would be willing to give, that we could devote to this, but I think the more that we can set aside now, it may make it easier to make it a temporary thing, because we'll catch up quicker, and maybe not have it be a permanent change, but I do think that there needs to be some sort of time that we can set aside to catch up on this sort of work.
My initial reaction would be that, you know, I wouldn't want to deprive the public of the services they have now, but I see the need to work on this backlog, so, kind of torn as to which way to go. And I would almost prefer to have a solution where there's reduced staff, rather than the actual hours changed, where maybe there's only one person that works the counter during that, and that the other three are free to do these, the other work that needs to be done. Again, I'm not saying that that's the way it should be done, I'm just wary of all of a sudden having people show up at city hall, expecting the office to be open, be able to take care of their needs, to find out they're closing an hour early, three days a week. So I'm not sure how that would transpire. Now, if there were reduced staffing, where the smaller number of people that come in at the late hour or the early hour, could still get their business done, I think it would be more palatable to everyone concerned. I don't know how the other members feel. Anyone want to comment on it?
I don't know how you can reduce staff. I don't know how you can reduce staff and expect more work to take place. What do you mean?
No, no, my, we're not reducing staff, because all this involves is-
You're reducing them coming in, aren't you?
No, no. This involves reducing the hours the office is open. The personnel is still there, but rather than working the counter, they're scanning in documents. Now, again, I'd rather, I want to make sure that if somebody comes to the counter, that they can get done what they need to do, which reduces by at least one person who could be doing the scanning during that time. So we're not reducing the staffing.
They're not doing that now?
Well, we do attempt to do that as much as possible now. The challenge is, there are several functions that the city clerk's office performs at the counter, that are very time-intensive. Filing for business certificates, the filing for marriage license, the application for marriage licenses, and the, most especially, the filing of affidavits to change the vital records, are all very time-intensive for the individual there, and the staff person that's helping them. The second challenge is, quite frankly, all the staff are right there, next to the counter. My, my customer service response is, there will be much more kind of negative feedback from the public. If you have one person working at the counter, and three people sitting over at computers, where the public doesn't know what they're doing, and you have people lining up frustrated that the people they see in front of them are not helping them, then if, for, you know, there's a, the door is locked, and it says the hours are changed, especially if we try to make that public. I, on the, I understand what you're saying, that, that you'd rather not deprive the public of the services. The customer service challenge is that it doesn't often work as we'd like it to, because that's what we do do. We do, I do say, you know, we do try every day to have one or two people who, as long as there's not a customer waiting, they're doing the scanning, but-
I understand your argument, but at the same time, when this was proposed, we also heard that during the times where considering, or being recommended the hours be cut back, that there's not a line out the door at those times, that it, there's not really a lot of people to service. So if that's being the case, I'm just wondering if having a dedicated person to handle that lower flow at that time, but still be able to service the public, would serve us as well, and still have people free to do the backlog of getting documents scanned. Well, that gets into another item we have on the agenda, which is cross-training, but that might need to take place. But Counselor Martin, you had a question?
I don't have a question, I just, I don't think we should be scaling back the hours. I mean, I think there's a, you know, for, it's a uniformity that city halls open from eight to five. I don't, I'd ask the manager, you know, is the treasurer, is there any other department that is all- that is open for the public have, you know, closed at four?
Yeah. This would be one of my concerns, is that one of the more, anyone that works in customer service knows that one of the more challenging parts of it is dealing with the public. And there, every other office stays open from eight till five, and if one office starts closing at eight to nine, or four to five, it's going to have a ripple effect throughout the whole organization that's problematic. I also, and I've had experience with this, of where if an office shuts, or if a, an office or a group of offices shut down for certain periods of time, the public does, my sense is, the public does respond in a negative fashion, particularly if they can get into the building, find that the office is closed. The hours of eight to nine, and nine, and four to five are generally the times that we, although we don't get a lot of business during that, it's the people who need to do business either before work or after work. They either go late to work and come in, or they leave work early to come in and get something that's of vital importance. And to get here and find that the office is closed, I think would be problematic. I personally would rather see us put more money towards some temporary help to do the catch-up than to disrupt the customer service that people have grown to expect from the city.
Well, I was about to say that. We just talked about maybe dedicating some resources to catch up in this backlog. I hear you loud and clear that based with the current staff, it's never going to get done, but I don't think the answer to that, you know, the solution to that problem is to cut back the hours. I think, you know, we used to have Saturday hours, you know, and we had to eliminate those, I think before my time, but, and it just never caught on, because people weren't used to, you know, City Hall being open on Saturday, but they are used to it, and you're right, people, it's hard enough. If you were, if you live in Lowell, and you don't work in Lowell, which is probably most of our residents, it's pretty hard to get to City Hall for five o'clock. If you're, you know, taking a trip and you need a birth certificate for a passport or something, it'd be very frustrating. So, I understand that we're not going to solve all the problems we have with this staffing level, but I think the way to address it is the previous topic, not this, not this proposal.
All right. So, although we need to find a solution to take care of that backlog, I think has been stated, is to find other ways. Either the management of the time of the people in the office without eliminating any service to the public, and making use of wherever we can of temporary or internships or part-time help to work through the backlog. But it sounds to me like it's going to be a management of the office to try and make time from some of the personnel without depriving the public of any of the services that they've become accustomed to. And so, I mean, what I'm hearing from the subcommittee, and actually, Mr. Manager, if you have anything else to add?
The only other point I was going to make, and I know this is, it's sort of related to this, is the, you know, we have a couple of empty offices, and one I expect we'll probably need to take back over at Neighborhood Services, but right now, there's an empty office over there. It might be, it might be useful to use that as the space for the interns, or for even the clerk's staff, to get away from the front desk, so that people don't see three people sitting there just at computers. If we put a scanner in there and a computer, set that up, that could be workspace to do the scanning and the data entry, catch up, so that people could see it, they're not distracted by the public coming in, and you'd still have staff in the clerk's office ready to deal with that. On a temporary basis, that might be a good way to bring in that additional temporary staff, or to use our existing staff to get that work done uninterrupted.
Sounds like a good suggestion. All right, so, from Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I suppose what it comes down to is basically that, you know, the acting clerk will need to make some sort of recommendation, to the extent of the staffing needed, to be able to, you know, carry out the work that would have otherwise been done had, you know, hours been changed.
Right. I mean, I, I, the suggestion that I had put forward to reduce the hours, this is all, it's all just a matter of degrees, quite frankly. In a perfect world, we could devote enough resources to fully maximize all the technology we have to catch up on the backlog and fully serve the public. I think we all understand that's not realistic, and so, it, like I said, it's just, it's just a matter of, if we get temporary staff, or we get a internship or work-study program going, that will certainly help to reduce the backlog. The downside, of course, of those people is, they're not trained in handling the vital records, and it's going to be much slower to have them doing the data entry than if we had staff members who are in the office doing the data entry. You know, I appreciate the manager's offer of a separate office, and I think that's something that we need to explore. If we had, if the office had been able to devote, the more staff time from people in the office that we were able to devote to handling the backlog of records, the faster the backlog would get done. And one of the things I wanted to mention is, the faster that backlog gets done, the faster we're able to serve the customers at the window, and the greater kind of time it frees up for, it's kind of a snowball effect. Right now, we're working on the data entry and scanning for 1958. Once the data entry and scanning for 1958 is done, anybody who comes into the office who had a birth, needs to get a birth record for 1958, it would be a matter of 10 seconds. You type in their date of birth in the computer, you headprint, it prints on the printer, you stamp it and seal it. Right now, if somebody comes in for 1958 and they're not in the computer, it involves going back to the birth registers. It's a five or 10-minute process, because you have to, you have to find what their register number is, climb up on the ladder to pull the book down that has that register number, take the book to the computer, do the data entry for that record at that time, verify that there are no affidavits on that record, you know, so it's a, it's not an economical use of time now. The faster we get the records in, the quicker we could be back to regular staff. That being said, if the, if the council wishes that we don't extend the hours, then what we have to do is use some of these alternate methods to improve it. I don't think it makes sense to over-extend our technology, because right now, we have one scanner in the office, and we're going to be obtaining a second scanner. The cost of obtaining multiple scanners above and beyond a second scanner is probably too much to say, you know, let's go out and spend several thousand dollars on another scanner, when we don't know right now if we're going to have either work-study or temporary individuals to operate it. And my anticipation is that those work-study or temporary or intern individuals are going to require at least some marginal supervision from a staff member right now. At this point, I wouldn't want to suggest anything other than doing that, just because I don't know how we're going to be able to handle staffing-wise the supervision of more than one work-study person. That being said, I'd like to leave it open going forward, if it appears as though that's working well, and we think we can, with the addition of another workspace area and more technology, it doesn't, if we think it makes sense, then I'd like to, you know, approach the manager and see if we can free up some resources to add another temporary individual, another work-study, as long as I think that the department can handle kind of the oversight of that, and still serve the public on a regular basis that we do now.
Okay. But, well, obviously, you're going to have to manage the records, and there's a cohort of records that have demand for them still. And then there's another cohort or group of records that are now very old, and other than genealogy probably is not a high demand for. And obviously, we want to get the high-demand records scanned in, so that you can get that economy of scale and economy of technology in getting it in two minutes versus 10 minutes. So naturally, we want to do that, but I think we can do that by, again, managing and getting someone in on a temporary basis to work through the high-demand ones, at least currently. But as we enter in new records into the computers going forward, the high demand of those that aren't will decrease, whereas the demand for those in the computer will increase, and we'll have that improvement in performance.
Right. And I also wanted, just for the subcommittee's information, to give you an idea of what kind of timeframe we're looking at. Shortly after the last beating, we had, we had the meeting on a Thursday, that following Tuesday, which would have been slightly more than two weeks ago, we made the determination that we were going to start working on the 1958 records. Right now, we're about halfway through with data entry and scanning. So, based on the current staffing levels, for one year, of which there was some marginal data entry already done, I mean, we're probably talking about, of the 3,700 records to birth records, there was probably, I don't know, 1,000 that had already been data entered in 1958. So, we're about halfway down. We're through 1,700 records fully completed over the course of two weeks. So, extrapolating that out, you're talking about about a month of the current staff time per year that we enter. So, assuming that same record, we're talking about 12 years per annum, and to catch up on the backlog of 40 years, you're talking about three and a half years of current staffing. My, I think the goal is to try and cut that down, and I think that, you know, by using temporary employees, hopefully, we can, we can cut that in half or so, to try and sometime during the next council's term, get this up to speed.
All right. Well, I mean, it sounds like you can make good progress, given what you've done so far with the personnel available. Last question for me is on this topic. Are we, anything more recent than 1958 already in the computers? That would be, that be a true statement? Or are there years between 1958 and now that are not yet in the computer?
Yeah, I can tell you specifically what we have. There's, this is two, very quickly, it's just a two, it's a two-stage process. There's a data entry process and a scanning function. The data entry is all we actually need to print out a record. The scanning function allows a scanned copy of the original to be stored on the computer, so that that original record can be boxed up and filed, and we don't need it in the office anymore. Because occasionally, people need a tested two copies of the original record, where the computer printout is not sufficient. They actually have to have a true copy attested. From 2004 to 2010, all of the data entry and scanning has been done. So every record, every birth, from 2004 to 2010, has the data entry and the scanned copy of the original, and all of those files are no longer kept in the first-floor safe of the clerk's office. From 1990 to 2003, they have been entirely data-entered. Scanning is not complete for those years. From 1950 to 1989, we have the original records in the clerk's office, in the safe in the clerk's office, and they have, there has been no specific attempt made to, until now, to data entry and scan any one year at a time. Since the system has gone online, the clerk's office has been doing data entry and scanning as the individual comes in, usually just the data entry. They usually don't, because of the way the records are stored, they're in a, they're bound together, so in order to scan them, you have to break the binding of the book and remove all the records, and then physically put them through the scanner. So, from, it's safe to say, from 1950 to 1989, data entry is sporadic, and scanning is almost not, has almost, there's almost no scanning that's been done. I chose 1958 for the sole expedient reason that the worst birth register in the office was 1958 through 1960, so that was the first set of records that we wanted to get in, so we could eliminate the use of that birth register. The next set of records will likely just be the next register that's the worst, and it won't be any kind of, probably won't be in any numerical order. I think it's 1970 to 1974 is what I think is the next worst register. The sooner we can get those registered circulation, the better, I think it is.
Okay. Thank you. Just an interesting, is there any other questions on that?
No.
All right. But to wrap this up, so the recommendation of the subcommittee on changing the hours is to not change the hours, to keep the hours as they are for customer service, and to manage the personnel within the office, so that the counter can continue to service the public while freeing up as many people as possible to do any scanning, catching up on the backlog. So, bottom line is, the recommendation of the subcommittee is to keep the hours open to the public as they are.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Mercer. Second by...
Do you want to make motions to not change the hours?
True, that's, well, good point. But just so that we can consider these items addressed. We're basically, we're not moving forward with the recommendation to change the hours. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion's carried, so we're leaving the hours as they are. Next item on, that I had on the agenda, we've already discussed somewhat, so maybe we can keep it brief, was the issue of record storage, retention, and preservation. And we've already discussed that. It has a lot to do with staffing, and the time to do the scanning and the data entry is what still needs to be done. I think going forward to keep, just to keep track of this, it might behoove us to have some kind of spreadsheet or something from the clerk's office, just listing years to be done, and then when they're completed. So, just something as simple as that, so we understand the progress that's being made in moving those records from being disbound to being available from a computer. And, Councilor Murphy?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Perhaps when, you know, a new clerk is hired, we might go through similar strategic goals for that particular office, so that, you know, we have some kind of performance indicator at the end of the year to be tracked, you know, how, how many, you know, records have been, or years have been completed, whether it be, you know, these or some other measure. But I think, you know, when we, when we begin that process, that we might sort of put in place reasonable expectations for what can be done in the next year.
Very good. And, does clerk want to comment on that, or?
I think it makes sense to set up some sort of goals for the new clerk, and have that, once we, once we have a little more time, especially once we can start up with an internship or a work-study program, and get an idea of how quickly we're able to enter records during that, it'll give the new clerk a kind of a basis for, for setting up a reasonable schedule.
And certainly, if we're having temporary help, we want some accountability on what's being accomplished, so it'd be good to have some kind of metric, so some kind of goals for the offices. And of course, it'll be contingent on having the additional staffing, even temporary staffing. Any other member have anything to comment on that? No. So, I think if we could just have that and plan ahead for when we do the budget for next year, that we're having performance-based budget, where we have metrics of what's going to be accomplished, that the clerk's office also provides some information for that. Okay. All right. The next item I have is the written policies and procedures. It was noted in the report that there didn't appear to be any written policies or procedure on how things were done in the office. And of course, when you have experienced help, they often, they already know what to do, but these are very valuable when you have someone new come into the office, or when there are questions about a rarely occurring procedure, as to what is the appropriate procedure. So I could understand that having a written policy and procedure was very important, and I have some items under there that I think are related to that. Those policies and procedures can help with cross-training that might be needed. We, we've had trouble where we've had meetings scheduled, but there's no one here to run the equipment for televising the meetings that we are supposed to have televised. And I also had on there the ordinance references that was mentioned in the report, and I don't know if that's, when that will be taken care of. And I'm just referring to having forms, that in the form, they reference some ordinance as to why something is required, so to make sure those references are current. as to why something is required, so to make sure those references are current. Anything you want to update us on the policies and procedures?
I just wanted to, just very briefly, the preparation of written policies and procedures is ongoing. As issues come up, we're trying to make sure that they are written down and stored in the computer, easily accessible to all the staff, in case something comes up in the Cross-training is also ongoing. The staffers are, we're trying to have all the staff be able to function on all the different issues that come up in the clerk's office. It is challenging because the state system that's coming online is new to everybody, and so there's only a couple of people who've actually been fully trained on it, and even they are still learning the system. But we're going through and having the individuals register the births on the new system, and as often as possible, having cross-training like that. The ordinance references on the forms, I think, was actually fixed before Mr. Leahy left the office. It was just something I think he noted, and they took care of it. There's no, there's no ongoing issue with invalid ordinances being referenced. As to the meeting scheduling and the TV coverage, it's, we reach out to LTC, they get copies of all the subcommittee meeting notices and the regular council meeting notices. The challenge, I guess, is that sometimes it's not clear to them whether or not they should be televising everything if there's not a request from the mayor's office. My standing order to them was, you know, I think you should televise every subcommittee or council meeting, but, you know, if you feel like you need to get authority, please give us a call, and we'll...
I mean, obviously, there have been votes of the council stipulating that council meetings always have been televised since the, it was cable, subcommittees, but also the different commissions and boards of the city. There was also stipulation that they be televised. So, in those cases, I would hope that part of the policy and procedure is to get acknowledgement, to know beforehand if they can't staff it, rather than, I know there was one meeting recently, we were here, and they couldn't make it. It was last minute. It wasn't a normal night to have such a meeting, but we were calling them to find out that they decided they couldn't staff it, they didn't have available personnel. I would just hope that it'd be part of the procedure and written policies and procedures that there be some acknowledgement, so it's known beforehand, and we can know before everyone shows up here, they can't cover that night, then we'd have the option of rescheduling, et cetera. So, in any case, part of that procedure should be to get acknowledgement whether or not they can actually perform the service that, that particular meeting.
Right. I mean, the, there is no direct contact, at least at this point, between the clerk's office and LTC unless, unless there's an issue that comes up. When other boards and commissions schedule meetings, the clerk's office does not contact LTC if the zoning board schedules a meeting. That's posted outside the clerk's office and outside in the courtyard, and it's the, I think what the assumption has been along is that the secretary of that board and commission needs to contact any, you know, LTC to let them know that it's happening, and the little son to let them know that it's happening, and we're really posting. We don't prepare those agendas, we're not. The clerk's office is not the, we don't keep those minutes. We're not the recording agent for anything but the city council and the council subcommittees. So...
Well, I understand, but at least for the ones that you do schedule, that somehow there'd be an acknowledgement process that may be passive in the sense that if they acknowledge that there'll be somebody here, it's all done. But if there is no acknowledgement, that somehow you need to follow up with them to find out either they will be here or they won't, just get an act of acknowledgement from them.
Certainly. I mean, I think it's going to involve kind of reaching, it's more like creating a new policy and procedure and reaching out to LTC, because right now, it's just not part of the clerk's function is to deal with LTC. We, the manager's office emails out the packets that include all the, all the meeting notices, and LTC is one of the individuals that gets those meeting notices, and like I said, since I've been there, occasionally, LTC has called and said...
Right.
Oh, does the council want this televised? And we say yes, but what I'm hearing is that you'd rather have the clerk's office take a more active role.
Well, somehow in these procedures, it needs to be handled somewhere. So long as it's addressed somewhere, I'd be happy, but I just don't want anyone to just say, oh, it's somebody else's responsibility, and then nobody does it, is the only issue I'm concerned. So, whatever the policy or procedure is, is fine with me, just that there be one. And Counselor Martin?
Is this so hard? I mean, this is very, this is borderline ridiculous. We want all the council meetings on TV. We've said that, you know, for years, and I'm not being critical of you, Mr. Slagle, but, you know, the council has a meeting, the clerk calls LTC, can you have someone there or not? I mean, that should be the, I make a motion that that's the policy. What else does it need to be, other than that?
I know, it's like...
I mean, how did they find out? Is this meeting on TV?
Yes, it is.
So, how did they find out about this meeting?
How did they know to be here tonight for us?
Well, like I said, the meeting notices that are included in the council packet are all sent to LTC. So, LTC is on notice of the council meeting and any subcommittee meetings that are scheduled that notices go out in the council meeting.
But I'd say, if it's not a Tuesday meeting, it's as likely as not that LTC is not here. So, that needs to change. And I think, you know, the phone was invented over 100 years ago. Now, we have email, so now there's a second way. So, you know, that, that should just be part of the duty when you type the notice.
Yeah, if I may, I think that the, I do know that the, on every Friday or anytime there's a subcommittee meeting, a city council meeting, a subcommittee meeting, there's a notice that goes off from the clerk's office, I believe from the assistant, that goes out and just disseminates that there's a, there's a meeting and this is the agenda. And I don't know if LTC is on that list, but then that should be. And I'd be happy to follow up with LTC to make sure that they know to be here whenever they get something like that, or if they can't for some reason. And I'm not going to make excuses for LTC on that, but if they can for some reason, they should let people know so that there's, because I do know that there have been a couple of occasions that I'm aware of that the council has met and LTC has not been here. And we've tracked them down once, and I'm aware of one time this summer that they weren't available at all, and I wasn't at that meeting, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, just whoever's doing the scheduling, I think this needs to be, get active acknowledgement from LTC, especially in the case when they can't. We can deal with it if we know beforehand, but we need that act of communication between the parties. So, if you don't hear back from them, then they have to follow up. If you do, you're all done. Any other comments?
Well, Sam Beth Boo is broadcasting this tonight. We should have her come in here and ask her, how did she know to be here?
But then there wouldn't be anyone out back to televise the meeting, so...
Well, they can't put it on automatic pilot like they can in a plane. A plane can fly itself, I don't know why that can't.
Well, I didn't mean to get us off on that one little item. That was just an example of why we need some policies and procedure on what do we do when this happens or doesn't happen, so that whoever is responsible for doing it knows when it's necessary to follow up and when it's all set. So, the answer I'm getting on the written policies and procedure, and again, I didn't mean for the interim clerk to have to take care of this and complete it, but it is nice to know that some progress is being made on it. This is something that when we appoint a permanent clerk, that has to be done, and they will have to complete it. And of course, policies and procedures, something that's constantly being updated and reviewed, just like that ordinance references, is, yes, maybe they're taken care of for now in the current version of our ordinances, but the policies and procedures need to have something in there about when they are reviewed, so that there's some checklist there. This year, we looked them over, they're all okay. We go for another year, we, some point in the year, they need to be reviewed to make sure they're still current. Unless the city council is not doing any business and nothing's changing, then maybe they don't need to change. But chances are that some ordinances changed that might affect what forms are available and what they reference. So, again, that just gets back to policies and procedures and having a procedure for following up on some of this, or a checklist of when some of this work gets done. So, bottom line is where it's being worked on, and we're, we'll continue to follow up and hopefully get to a point where we have current policies and procedures in place. Anyone else have anything on that topic? The last item I had, that, and again, we just want to get a completion to this, is there was a mention of possibly having a cash register in the clerk's office, but at the same time, we've been hearing about having options for computerization that might keep track of this instead, and so it becomes a matter of, is this necessary? Will it solve a problem? Is there another solution? And if this is necessary, we can budget for it, a cash register, I don't think it's that expensive, but other solutions, computers, whatever it might be. So, we'll start with the clerk, anything on this item?
I mean, I think there are two issues. First is the cash reconciliation and check reconciliation issue. I think those have been solved. The process that was created by Attorney Leahy and the city auditor has been in place since, long before he left, and I think it's been working fairly flawlessly since that time. The other issue is the kind of tracking of the printing out of certified copies. And while I understand that there was an issue about that, it doesn't appear to be an issue, to me at least, that would require the cash register to solve. I think that, while the tracking of copies might prevent the giving away of free birth certificates or marriage certificates, the problem was not people surreptitiously giving away free certificates. The problem was, the policy of the clerk's office was, we were going to give people that we like free certificates, and we weren't going to charge people who work for the city here, we weren't going to charge local politicians, or we weren't going to charge people who we knew for certificates. And that policy hasn't been changed, it has been made exceedingly clear to all of the staff members that the policy is, everybody has to pay for a copy of a birth certificate, unless it's for official government use by a state, local, or federal agency, including a, you know, an agency, a department of the city for official department use, not merely for an employee. So, that is the policy. I have not had any problems with any individuals in the staff deviating from that policy. It's more a supervision of the office issue than, I think, a technology issue, which is that, you know, we've made it clear to the, to the staff members that they're not allowed to give out free copies. If anybody comes in and requests a free copy, they immediately speak to a supervisor. The supervisor makes it clear to the individual that the policy is that nobody gets a free copy, and that's how we proceed. There's no, it doesn't change, I don't think that would change whether or not there was a cash register or some computer tracking. I do, however, see some downsides, and I think I put them in my report, about tracking the numbers of, or the, each individual certified copy that is printed, for a couple of reasons. The first is because there are often cases where certified copies are given out without charge, in the case if there's, a copy is printed and there's an error on the copy, a death certificate is printed and there's an error on the death certificate, if it is for official government use, and they've demonstrated that there's for official government use, there's a, those are no-charge copies. I wouldn't want to create a policy that merely creates greater workload for the staff when, right now, I think the reconciliation policy that is in place now requires that a receipt be generated for every certificate that's given out, whether there's a charge or not, and if there's a no-charge, it has to be, you know, run by the supervisor. And so, that's kind of my thought on whether or not a cash register is needed. I think it probably isn't at this point.
Counselor Mercer?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. What is the charge for a notary public, something to verify and notarize something?
The office charges $1 per page for notary public. Let me rephrase that. The individual notary publics in the office charge $1 per page for notary public services.
All right, thank you.
So, that goes to the notary, not the office?
That's correct. That goes to the notary.
Okay. So, basically, I'm hearing that we're keeping track of even the no-charge on the receipt, so that we can reconstruct how many were given out by looking at the receipts?
We can construct how many were given out, yes. Obviously, if one is printed out in error, or occasionally happens, one is printed out and not handed to an individual, they are told, they don't have their purse, they don't have their $10, they leave and don't come back. Those are merely shredded. There's no, you know, they never leave the office, those are shredded. But everyone that walks out of the office, either via mail or over the counter, is tracked with a receipt, whether it's charged or not.
All right. So, the bottom line on addressing this recommendation is that, in your opinion, there are other procedures in place that would make a cash register redundant or unnecessary?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. And I guess the no need to comment from the manager unless he wants to chime in.
It's something that, to tell you the truth, I, as I was looking at this, I brought some information from the CFO regarding cash registers. He did some price checks. We're not talking a lot of money here, and I'd like an opportunity to talk to him and perhaps to the auditor, and see if there's what their thoughts are regarding, not the clerk's office necessarily, but whether these could be tied in with our computer system in some way that might, for every office that accepts cash, and that may prove very helpful. But I think it seems like it's under control.
Okay, very good. The other items I had were just for tracking purposes. I didn't want to spend time discussing them unless there's an update to them or a question from my colleagues on the subcommittee. So, just an item number two, just take the whole thing as a whole. Is there anything there you want to comment on? You don't have to, I'm just there for the opportunity. We'll start with the clerk.
I just wanted to very, very quickly say, we are in the process of updating the online, or the recording for the training and certifications for the state ethics law, and we'll be rolling that out within the next couple of weeks. I've worked with MIS and the HR department, and I think we have it under control.
All right. So, as I expected, we move forward. We're keeping track of it from now on, and we should be compliant as soon as everyone goes through this next cycle. Mr. Manager?
Just a couple of things in these, and I, you know, I haven't had the opportunity to meet with the subcommittee to talk about any of these items really, but I do think it's important that the, I like the idea that the local board memberships are updated on a regular basis out of the clerk's office. I think that's the place where that function really should be taking place. It's helpful to my office as we try to keep current with that, and the ethics law is a new, certainly relatively new change in law of the training, and I think that's crucial as well. I also think that the fact, and I think we all kind of missed this perhaps, as we're going through the subcommittee meeting minutes, is it's great to have those now being looked at. The one recommendation, and I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds in raising this, but I do think that, I've noticed that the council votes these. I think it's more appropriate that the, just from my observation, the subcommittee themselves vote these, because they're the body that's actually holding the meetings and is there to do it, rather than having the full council review the, and vote on the open meeting, on the minutes of the subcommittee meetings. So, just an observation and something that, I think it's, that's more traditional.
In our discussion, the reason, and we don't have to continue, I mean, we could change how we do it, is that the subcommittee doesn't necessarily meet in a follow-up in order to approve the minutes, and so the opportunity to have everyone available to approve them, and certainly could object to them at the time, is that the full council meeting, just to obviate... meeting, just to obviate the need to have a subcommittee meeting just to approve minutes. Counsel Mercer.
Yeah, I agree with that. Although your suggestion is good, it's not something that, yeah. Because we're, we're, as a council, he's, he's going to do a report of progress on what we've discussed, and the council supports that report of progress.
Counsel Murphy?
Just on that point, the one thing would be if, if you had, you know, like, there's only four councils here, unless people are at home watching on TV, that they would be voting, you know, present when accepting the minutes.
That's the way.
All right. Any other comments from the subcommittee on any of these items, or anything in the interim clerk's report in general, even if I didn't list it? Counselor Martin?
Well, I just, I appreciate the ongoing efforts. You know, there's been some starts and stops with the various people running this office. And, you know, I think, you know, although there's much work to be done, significant improvements have been made. So, I want to thank Mr. Slagel for your, for your efforts there. Looks like we may have a new clerk sooner, fairly soon. So, I don't know how much longer the acting role will, will continue. But you're doing a good job, and thank you for, for that.
I'd have to concur. I mean, we're going over this report and all of these negative things that are in the clerk's office, but it's, it's encouraging to see the progress that is being made. And many things are being addressed, and some just take time, like scanning in the documents and getting up to date. But I think most of the other things that could be done in a short timeframe have been, and we'll keep on top of it as our role on the subcommittee. If there's nothing else, the next thing on here is just setting a date for the next meeting. I anticipate we've covered all the areas from the report now, and that the next, I would anticipate only one meeting in December. And that'd be just to get updates from the clerk on the progress that's made on any of the items that are still ongoing. And that'll be it for, for the year. So, maybe, and now I would ask the clerk availability of Thursdays and Tuesdays.
I would, I would make one request, which is, as Counsel Martin had noted, it appears as though the search for a clerk is reaching some sort of critical point. It may make sense to wait, not necessarily until the new clerk starts the job, but until the new clerk has been selected to schedule a date. That way, that individual could be here for the next subcommittee meeting, even if they haven't started, even if they haven't, you know, officially started. It might give the, the new clerk kind of a head start on, on some of the issues and meeting with the subcommittee, if the, if the subcommittee would think that was appropriate. I think that might be a good idea.
I believe we'll have to, and if we can arrange that, it'd be fine. Right now, I'm just looking for an update on current activities, and that would be your role up until the time we appoint a new one. And now, if, if we can appoint someone sooner than I expect, then I'd certainly reconsider it. But if we don't have one named, and starting by, say, the second Thursday in December, that we just have a quick meeting, get an update on ongoing progress on these improvements, would that be acceptable to you?
I think that would make sense.
That'd be fine. Just a matter...
Are you saying the next meeting is the second Thursday in December?
I would just throw that out as a suggestion. Can't?
I have training in...
All right. So that's not an option. And I see the 15th as the last opportunity for us. I don't know.
That's fine with me.
December 15? All right. And I mean, if so, mm-hmm. Okay. So, yeah, it'll be again at 6:00 PM. And I anticipate that'll be the last meeting of this term of this ad hoc subcommittee at that time. All right. So we'll, we'll set that as a tentative date for now. Unless some other conflicts come up, we'll be meeting on the 15th to get an update on the improvements in the office. Okay. If there is nothing else, motion to, I guess, recess until the 15th, where we will adjourn?
Motion to recess.
By Counsel Mercer, second by Counsel Martin. All those in favor say aye, and opposed say nay. We stand in recess. Thank you.